Twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, meeting of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. So a few couple of items to go over before we officially get started. And this meeting is live on Comcast Local Channel twenty seven and on the Pacific Coast TV's website. And we have a few, just a few people from the community here in attendance this evening. Um, so just a review for the attendees. And the Planning Commission Chair will open and allow public comments, general public comment prior to the specific items listed on the agenda. The Chair will open the public um comment during each specific item as well as the general public um portion. During that time, if you'd like to speak, I will recognize you by raising your, when you raise your eye, hand, virtual hand icon. Um, I'll assist with the public comment and allow each person to speak. If you have dialed in this evening via telephone, push star six to mute and unmute and star nine to raise and un-raise your hands. Otherwise, the computers, tablets, iPhones, etc., have the icon um hand feature and you may press that to raise your hand. Three minutes will be given um for each commenter and a timer will show up on the screen. Um, I believe that there were no public comments and these, our staff will um confirm that, but no public comment was, was sent um or submitted. I thank you for your patience and I will now hand over this meeting to Chair Goran to officially start.
Great, um, so let's officially start uh with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, to the United States, America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So, let's see, we have to approve the minutes um for um.
Roll call first.
I'm sorry, roll call first.
It's okay. It's okay, Commissioner Gossett?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Here and present.
Commissioner Reddick?
I'm here.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
I am fully present.
And Chair Goran?
Here, yes.
All five Commissioners are present this evening.
Great. So, uh, for the minutes, uh, for the last meeting, um, I was not here. Um, thank you Vice Chair Hernandez for taking over. You are so much better at this than I am. It was really interesting to see the meeting. But um, anybody have any questions about, I'm gonna recuse for the minutes, but does anybody have any questions or comments? Or do we need to pass it on to Vice Chair Hernandez? Is that how we do it?
I just made a motion to approve.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Great.
A motion and second, so Commissioner Gossett?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Uh, I recuse since I was out for that portion of the meeting that was substantive.
Okay.
Abstain, same, sorry.
Abstain, that's fine, I got, I got it. Um, and then Chair Hernandez?
Approved, aye.
Three zero, it's been approved.
Um, so now is the time for public comment on any item that is not on the agenda. So if you're in the public, you have something you want to talk about, you raise your little virtual hand, um, and Virgil will call on you and you can say what you want to say. Is there, I don't see anyone right now, Virgil, do you see someone?
I do not.
Yeah, so um, so we are gonna close that part of the meeting and we can move on to our first item, which is a temporary use permit for Ocean Colony. I assume this is Jill to talk about it.
Sure, thank you Chair Goran. Uh, this is an item that the Commission has looked at for many years in a row now. This is a uh repeated event and really all we're asking you to do is acknowledge that you have um received uh the Director's update that um we intend to approve this insofar as it conforms to the zoning code for temporary events within a planned development area. Um, I believe that the applicant is present in the event that you have any questions. Um, but it's, it's that simple and um we're happy to take any notes on this if you have them.
This is about the sixth time, I think, I've seen this item, um, so I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Uh, thank you, yeah, it's not really a question, just to confirm, because the public has occasionally been interested in the parking arrangements and to be sure that fire lane access will be just hunky dory. My understanding is that is the case?
Yeah, thank you, um, Commissioner Benjamin. Uh, these projects are reviewed by the Fire District and uh fair codes need to be abided by, um, not just for the fire lane, but also for uh having tents um and how they are set up and um what's next to them, um, they are flammable or could be. Uh, so uh fire is uh completely in the loop in this and this is, um, I think I didn't even introduce the item and the Ocean Colony, um, it's really the tent with additional events that occur there.
And it uh, it's also a CDP exemption, not only a use permit, right?
Um.
Or no?
It's just a temporary, I, I think it falls under that category because it's covered as a temporary use and it uh does not require a CDP. Um, it's very specifically outlined, um, that the scope of what, what can be allowed for temporary uses.
Okay, no questions, thank you.
And do we have a motion?
Uh, I move that we acknowledge that we have received this.
That's all we need to do?
Correct.
Okay, so we have.
I'll second, I'll second it.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Aye.
And Chair Goran?
Uh, yes.
Motion approved of acknowledgement.
Yeah, it just occurred to me, I did not open public comment for that item. I guess we'll do it. Um, so if anyone has a comment on that item.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um, but I don't see anyone out there, so, um.
Nope. Yeah, there's no comment, I mean, no public has raised their hand, you lost your, your um camera.
Did I lose it?
Yeah, you might have turned it off by accident, I'm not sure, I'm just letting you know.
Okay, hold on.
All good.
What is going on here?
If anyone through the chair, if anyone does come back and wanted to comment on that, I would be happy to move to have the motion reconsidered so that no one feels like their right to comment has been abridged.
There he is.
I love that. Um, I don't really think, I mean, that's great, I'm um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think it's really necessary concerns anybody out there. Um, I would like to open public comment for that one, if there is somebody who would like to talk about that, as well as the uh next item on the agenda, which is the um, um, what is on your agenda, sorry?
Yeah, there's, we have no one.
Okay, the uh, the Coastside Recovery Initiative, if anyone wants to speak on that.
Yeah, Karen.
And seeing none, um, I think we can move on. Uh, Jill, is this you as well?
Chair Goran, I just want to introduce the item. Um, tonight you will have a presentation on uh the Coastside Recovery Initiative. Um, and I'm happy to intro-introduce Erica Wood. She is a consultant to the city who um has been, I just remarkable in her getting to know us and already knowing the community. And we really think that you will um enjoy hearing about their work and its connection to your uh planning work. And then Karen Decker is here as well. Karen is a Senior Management Analyst with the city. She has presented to you in the past, I think, um, probably most recently for Carter Park. And um she and Erica have uh spent a lot of, a lot of time producing that report and they are now moving into implementation. And there's, there's just a lot of um crisscrossing with uh the work of the Commission and because this is so fresh and important to the community, we thought it would be a great benefit to the Commission to get a firsthand presentation from uh the folks who did the work, did the outreach, worked with the task force, etc. So without further ado, I'd like to uh turn it over to Erica and Karen. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for the invitation and for that warm introduction, Jill, we appreciate it. Um, and good evening Chair Goran and Commissioners and members of the community. Um, as Jill said, my name is Karen Decker, I'm a Senior Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office. And Eric and I are really excited to provide this overview of the initiative, um, make connections to the work of the Planning Commission and share implementation updates with you. Um, we understand the Commissioners have received copies of the report. Um, thank you for the planning staff for making that happen. And if anyone listening would like to access a link to the report, um, you can find the link in the Agenda Packet under Item One B Memo, um, or you can go to coastsiderecovery.com. I will go ahead and jump right into our presentation. Great, okay. So the Coastside Recovery Initiative is an economic recovery plan and it's also a city council priority. So it's sponsored by the City of Half Moon Bay, uh, in close partnership with the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce and with support from San Mateo County. These are the two project goals that are really the aspiration for this work. Helping businesses recover from COVID meant that we needed to have a clear understanding of what businesses were going through. And when we say coast side community, like in this first bullet, we're referring to Devil Slide, South to the County Line and East to Skyline Boulevard. So for this particular project, we had a degree of freedom in looking at both problems and opportunities regionally as opposed to being um limited to the um, the confines of the city limit. And then regarding the second bullet, I'd like to elaborate on what we mean by equitable, because I know we, we hear that term equity often. We know the pandemic devastated tourism and the hospitality and restaurants industries, um, as well as small businesses. And those industries are the very ones that make up the majority of the coast side economy. And on an individual and family level, we know that COVID plunged those who were already vulnerable into crisis mode. And so taking that into account, the regional cost of living um is nearly eighty percent higher than the US average. And so if we hope to be a vibrant and resilient coast side economy that's well prepared for the shocks that frankly we know are coming, we need to make sure that we have an economy that works for everyone. These guiding principles, they surfaced and they resurfaced throughout the work. Some helped inform project decisions, like how we designed the application process for the task force, um, the decision to invite Dr. Chris Benner to kick off our first task force meeting using a solidarity economics framework to help keep equity at the forefront of our work. And then other principles came up because of opportunities that we just couldn't have foreseen when we first launched the um, the initiative. So for instance, the Our Voice Pilot, um, which was a, an opportunity with the Stanford Prevention Research Center, brought innovation to this process. All that to say that these principles were not something that we checked off of a list and then moved on from. They were visited and they were revisited, um, frankly, to bring integrity to this process. Here you see an overview of that process. So we kicked things off with an open house, which was attended by nearly two hundred participants. Were able to split them off into small breakout rooms and they were able to weigh in on what was top of mind for them in terms of economic development. Uh, we have the establishment of the brand and the task force, multiple sources of data, like key informant interviews and focus groups, it county survey results and publicly accessible data. And we also had learning tours where task force members were able to walk around and really absorb three kind of business district areas, if you will. Um, one was at Pillar Point Harbor, the other was downtown Half Moon Bay, and then the third one was at Pescadero, um, which started at the intersection of Stage Road and Pescadero Creek Road. Um, and then of course, we have the recommendations themselves, there's a total of fifteen. At the open house back in early twenty twenty one, our keynote speaker was Lenny Mendonza, the former Chief Economic and Business Advisor to Governor Newsom. And Lenny spoke about why it was an ideal time to plan for recovery. He also spoke about best practices and said that the most successful economic development efforts, efforts that he's seen all had the following four elements: they were community driven, they were anchored to data, they took into consideration regional connections while not losing sight of local needs, and they were appropriately ambitious in our role of getting to the next economy. So we took the advice of subject matter like expert, um, subject matter experts like Lenny, um, and others to heart and we were intentional in rooting our process in best practices. Uh, this is our mighty task force, uh, it's made up of people who live or work on the coast or both. Um, I learned so much from this, these, this group of people. They provided a multi-dimensional view of our challenges and our opportunities. They represent a wide range of expertise across many sectors and industries. Um, here you will see agriculture, law, nonprofit leadership, media, commercial real estate, sustainability and ecology, venture capital, small business, education, hospitality. Um, and yes, we have a former planning commission experience, which we're really excited to have. This group volunteered their time and their knowledge, not just for one event as a volunteer, but the initiative hosted over twenty convenings. So they really um did their duty well and the culmination of their efforts resulted in the final report, which marks the end of the planning process and the beginning of implementation, which we've been in for a couple of months now. So the task force spent most of their time in at least one working team. And each team had a particular focus area that resulted from discussions at the open house and from task force discussions. And so when you hear Eric and I say innovate or team innovate, that group of individuals asked the question, how do we diversify the economy and spark business innovation? Um, for Team Thrive, they really focused on how we support local businesses and nonprofits, not just so they survive through something like a pandemic, but how can we put position them to um be resilient, no matter what shocks come their way? For Team Vibrant, this group looked at creating vibrant commercial and community spaces and they connected that specifically to economic development in that relationship. And then for Team Eco, this group looked at how we use our environmental assets to strengthen the economy. But then put another way, how do we look at economic development and use that to support um environmental stewardship and how um to protect the environment? I also want to acknowledge affordable housing and digital infrastructure and traffic. These three things came up repeatedly at the open house and throughout our working team discussions, because they are large, important issues. Um, but we see these as part of a larger economic development agenda that will pull in private and public partnership and collaboration beyond just the Coastside Recovery Initiative. But just wanted to acknowledge their importance because we're not going to get to the next economy or realize these recommendations in a real way unless we can put our arms around housing and um digital infrastructure. So this may look familiar, I know the Planning Commission is no stranger to blueprints for action and the Coastside Recovery Initiative um report really stands on the shoulders of truly great planning efforts that will serve the coast side for decades to come. We have the Parks Master Plan, which supports vibrant spaces and place making, which is right in line with Team Vibrant. Um, it supports having color and breathing life into our parks. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan addresses safety and mobility. Uh, those were themes that came up heavily during our Our Voice Pilot that I mentioned earlier. So that pilot was additive data that we didn't necessarily anticipate, collected by community members that resulted in over two hundred geo-tagged images in which photos of different places on the coast were taken in response to a prompt. So the prompt that Cry gave Stanford was, does this photo enhance or detract from the vibrancy and accessibility of the coast? The Land Use Plan Update supports the efforts of the Coastside Recovery Initiative in several ways. Um, just top of mind, supplemental uses came up in terms of expanding economic viability, which could take the form of tourism or farm to table experiences, cooking or organics classes. The workforce housing overlay affords multiple benefits, from farm worker housing to supporting a local workforce to reducing commutes, which is better all around. It's better for the environment, it reduces traffic, it's better quality family life. Um, and Erica will be touching on additional ways the land use plan supports economic development, um, when she drills down on a couple of our recommendations. And here are those recommendations, and so I'm gonna pass the baton off to Erica.
Okay, good evening Commissioners and the community, I'm really delighted to be with all of you this evening. You can hear me okay? Can I see a thumbs up? Okay, great. Um, so this slide is not intended for you to read and commit to memory, but it is intended to be illustrative, illustrative of the fifteen recommendations across the four working teams. And I think it's really important to note the close coordination that we had with community development and Jill and team, in particular, throughout our process. And that even included a special task force meeting last August, which was focused on the local coastal land use plan update, town center efforts and projects that were in the pipeline. So we're gonna take a deeper dive into a select set of recommendations, beginning with Team Eco. And this recommendation that was really focused on support for our farming community. This is really because farms and ranches throughout the state and even the nation are really at their greatest transition point in history. We have seen a number of troubling signs in recent decades, including decline in farms and farm workers and a drop in agricultural production value, and that was particularly true the year we had the CZU fire. And when we look at these issues combined with what's happening around climate change, it really, really compels new ways of thinking and new ways of doing business. And I would just applaud this Commission for recognizing that and that the local coastal land use plan supports innovation by opening up agricultural lands for things like research and development, among other uses. So that creates a real opportunity for us to be visionary and become a model of regenerative agriculture and sustainable farming practices for our region and even beyond our region. And we have wonderful um nodes of opportunity, as I like to say, like the mushroom farm, which was the former Campbell's Soup Plant in Pescadero, you've probably driven by it and not paid much attention. But inside, there is a ton of indoor agriculture and mixed-use spaces as well as greenhouse spaces that really make it perfect for prototyping regenerative farming and uh resilience technologies, among other things. And this can really help kind of propel us into the next economy with the kinds of high wage, high meaning job opportunities that can get the next generation excited about farming in our food systems. But in addition to that, we know we also need to really pay attention uh to the people who are working our lands right now. As the report says, our farm workers are both essential and vulnerable and face incredible hardships. Um, hazards in the workplace, unemployment, underemployment, food and housing insecurity and challenges related to their immigration status. So I'm pleased to share that another um accomplishment is that a new farm worker cooperative has been launched and is being built that will provide low-income participants with the land, supplies and equipment to practice organic and regenerative farming methods and learn the basics of farm operations and management so that they can become, these farm workers can become farm owners and their incomes can increase from an average of thirty thousand a year annually to sixty thousand. So that's exciting. And now we'll turn our attention to Team Vibrant. This team was really focused on vibrant commercial and community spaces. And we um define vibrant as spaces that both have an economic purpose in that they facilitate the exchange of goods and services, but they also have this community purpose where people can come together and share values, traditions, culture and experiences. I know this is all very familiar to this uh Commission. And there were several business districts on the coast side that our task force members identified as not meeting quite the full potential of being a vibrant space. And those included Main Street in downtown Half Moon Bay, Pescadero and Pillar Point Harbor. And we really honed in on downtown Half Moon Bay and Pescadero because the harbor was undergoing its own planning process at the time. And some of the challenges that were noted included underutilized spaces in downtown to really a complete lack of community planning capacity in Pescadero. And the walking tours that Karen mentioned and the Our Voice Pilot really helped us document and understand the challenges. So the good news is there is a lot of momentum to build on, thanks to the great work of you all and the plans that Karen talked about earlier. So one of the recommendations is a downtown revitalization project or streetscape redesign on uh several blocks of Main Street. And we have two hundred and fifty thousand that has already been approved as part of the city's uh capital improvement program to start this work, so that's great. And we'll also look at some enhancements to McDutra Park, like painting and greening and public art, which will be really nice. But streetscape is a long, is a long game and a longer term effort. We're also proud of what's been accomplished in the shorter term through the Make It Main Street series, which hopefully all of you have had an opportunity to experience. And while it features local artists and it's about kind of making downtown an exciting place to be, it is also about spurring economic activity and getting people to patronize our local businesses and restaurants. So that's been great to see with Make It Main Street. And then finally, in Pescadero, there is no public gathering space and our walking tour made that abundantly uh clear. So there are. So there are two vacant commercial lots in the town of Pescadero that have been under review by the county. And at least one, at least one will soon be purchased as a future site for a community plaza. So we're really excited about that. And then turning our attention to team thrive, this was the team that focused on supporting our local businesses, our small businesses and nonprofits. As all of us know, small businesses are anchors to local economies, but they have been heavily impacted and continue to be heavily impacted by the pandemic. And we've seen that particularly in sectors that employ low wage workers, people with less formal education and business owners who are people of color. And unfortunately, these same sectors, food and accommodation services, tourism, hospitality, make up the bulk of our coast side economy. So layoffs, reduced hours, salary reduction for employees, changing health and safety requirements, difficulties meeting rent. These are just some of the challenges that small businesses told us about. Unreliable internet and cellular coverage, as well as PG&E shut offs due to high fire risk, you know, layer on to those challenges. And we were particularly struck that one local farm said a shut off translates to a loss of $10,000 when they have to miss a milking. So real economic consequences. Nonprofits providing critical safety net services have struggled too. Job losses, underemployment, combined with our exorbitant cost of living, and we're in a county that bears the distinction of being the least affordable place to live, have really, really led to an unprecedented demand for services. You know, we've seen lines for free food in downtown Half Moon Bay on weekends, heard absolutely heartbreaking stories in the interviews and focus groups that we did about the lack of affordable housing, children having to sleep in campers, people being evicted or having to leave the area altogether. So the needs for our local businesses and nonprofits are great, but there's also a lot of progress. And because of the coast side recovery initiative and recommendation 10, which you see on your screen, we were thrilled to learn just last week that the county board of supervisors approved 2.5 million dollars in funding for Half Moon Bay for a center that will provide a whole suite of services to help businesses and nonprofits alike, including things like business planning, technology training, marketing, help with accessing capital, just an array of supportive services that will be a game changer. And this was really building on the work that the chamber has been doing around business support. So we're excited to be able to leverage that. I'll also say that in addition to those support services, finding ways to make it easier to do business is also important. And again, I just want to acknowledge this commission for its approval of the blanket coastal development permit for sidewalk and parklet activity. That has been a huge boon for businesses in difficult times to be able to operate outdoors. So it's great to see that that can continue. And finally, the city has also realigned some of its grant funding to really support some of our local nonprofit safety net providers. Last but not least, our team innovate, and this will be the last recommendation that I talk about tonight. This team was really focused on the next economy and saw that, you know, increasing access to higher education and vocational training opportunities was, was the path. And again, you know, that some of the need driving this, there was a half moon bay article with the headline that Latinx students were five times more likely to get Ds and Fs than their white counterparts. And when we know that 85% of the people working in accommodation and food services are people of color making $30,000, imagine $30,000 in such a high cost county, it's really been a call to action. So one member of our task force created the workforce development roundtable. And it really is symbolic of the right people coming together at the right time to focus in on this recommendation that group is continuing to meet. Another way that we're really trying to bring this recommendation into reality is through a tremendous partnership with the College of San Mateo. We have already been tapped to consult with them on something called the coast to college lift program that helps students with transportation between the college campus in San Mateo and at 10 different pickup locations on the coast side. And it's been 11 years since we had a higher education presence on the coast. I remember when we had that and I remember when it went away. And we have forged a great relationship with the president and she has said to us, what do you need? Show me a recommendation. So when she asked, we delivered. And now I'm happy to say that efforts are underway to bring both classes and academic support services back to the coast and potential sites are being scouted as we speak. Carter Park, here's another great example of great planning leading to great results. The groundbreaking happened last week. Congratulations. And you know, this, this park renovation is going to have community benefit to be sure, but also important economic benefit. And I think it really represents the best of what can happen when there is a convergence of the political and community will to get things done, both of which frankly will be needed as implementation of the coast side recovery initiative recommendations continue. So again, on our last slide, for more information, for an online version of the report, you can go to our website, you see that on the screen. And Karen and I are looking forward to questions and the discussion.
Thank you, Erica Wood and Karen Decker. Before we get into questions and discussion, can we just open up a public comment because I did take things out of order once again. And so if there's anyone in the public who would like to comment on this, we do have a few people who are paying attention here. Just raise your hand. Now is the time to comment.
Dang, none.
Bridget, I'm seeing nobody.
No, same here.
All right. So I would like to open this up to commissioners. Commissioner Benjamin, your hand is up.
Yes, thank you very much for recognizing me. So that was a very great presentation. I was very excited to see the steps that are underway. Congratulations to the team that has been working on that. I can see why you anticipated that we would be excited by the presentation tonight. That was, that was a lot of fun. I wonder if, you know, one of the programs that was available for many small businesses over the last couple of years was the federally supported paycheck, sorry, paycheck protection program. And I wonder if as part of the process, we have a sense of how that fared, you know, whether it was effective in half moon bay, not that it was a solution, but just to try to figure out what the lessons, if any, are that are available from our experience with it.
You know, I didn't hear about the payment protection program in a very meaningful way. And that's not to say that it wasn't meaningful for some businesses, but I think when businesses reached out to me or Erica or, or we got tapped to, you know, converse with them and learn from their experiences, it was from a place of dire straits. It wasn't, you know, necessarily in the throes of, of something successful. I will say that not just specific to that program, but also to a lot of social programs that nonprofits were really excited to roll out. And I, I've heard this echoed at the county level as well. Sometimes the most well conceived programs don't land the way they're initially conceived to, either because of the speed in which they're rolled out or because, you know, the right outreach workers boots on the ground to really get that message out in the languages and in the culturally competent ways that are necessary. You know, they don't always stick the landing despite really great intentions. So I know that's a very general answer to a more specific program, but I don't have really specific things that come to mind in the last year and a half when I think about that particular federal program.
Sure. And I, I didn't mean to imply that I expected you to know all of the details. It might be that if there are lessons, and I think you called out several of the lessons learned, right? If it wasn't culturally competently presented, if it was difficult to access, if it suggested a level, you know, a buffer of, you know, survivability in an interim period between the time you find out the program exists and the time you achieve the benefits and that, that period didn't exist, then, you know, these are all lessons going forward for how we think about the programs that we want to roll out. It suggests that they've got to have this sort of very, very short loop from planning to implementation, you know, maybe, and, and maybe that we anticipate that some programs without sword speed will do well. Some of them may fail and failing isn't a bad thing in this context. We learn what didn't work, we move on. That's a, that's a traditional slogan, Valley maxim, right? A failure can be a form of success because you find out what didn't work. So I'm, I'm super excited about what I've seen so far and I look forward to finding ways to contribute. I hope other members of the public who are watching this presentation or reading your materials are thinking, gosh, I have this skill that I could contribute or this time that I could contribute and that they find a way to join in because sometimes it's a professional benefit. Sometimes you just volunteer and that's a wonderful thing to do. Thank you very much for what you're doing tonight.
Thank you.
And Vice Chair Hernandez, your hand goes out.
Likewise, this is a great document. It synthesizes so many things we've been working on the coast as you call out. And I think it does a really effective job of capturing problems I see in our community and it provides some effective strategies for going after things. So I think this is fantastic. I really like the list of recommendations at the end. I think that's fantastic. My camera won't focus on it, but I think it's really helpful, especially as, you know, city staff, politicians and so forth cycle in and out. And as a community, this is kind of a nice action list for folks to go after. So kudos to you on this. So two things jumped, so two things jumped out at me from reading the report and a third one from your comments. So I'll start with your comments. The community college on the coast would be amazing. There are a lot of kids at Half Moon Bay High School who have tried to work with CSM. It's a little far for some of them. So classes that supplement what they're doing there, the, you know, award winning robotics program, you know, computer science classes, you know, with college level classes that may be more appealing to some students who are trying to do the, the dual program. That'd be great if we can get things like that, that really support those kids who trying to do a non-traditional acceleration of their high school program and maybe want to take some more demanding classes. That would be really great to see that. I know there's other needs for farm workers and people who are going back to, you know, trying to change careers. Those are also important things and making it local is really helpful. The power thing really struck me of the, the use, the, the story of, you know, the farmer who's lost $10,000 in a day if he doesn't have power. And so I, I was surprised that there's no, and maybe it's too much, but I'm curious why there's nothing in it that says, hey, let's maybe make more sustainable power, maybe get solar arrays, maybe have the county and the city work to fund battery backups for some of these farms. So we do have supplemental power sources and power reserves. It is expensive for a homeowner and for a farm. I'm sure it's even more expensive. So I was curious as to, you know, if there was any discussion around that particular topic. And then I have another point and I'll come back to it in a second. So I'll see if you have anything to say about those two points and then I'll find my third point in just a sec.
I can go ahead and start. Yes and yes, Commissioner Hernandez, those, those points came up time and again. And interestingly, in the context of some of our team eco discussions and the resilience technologies, solar innovations in solar and what that can do to increase crop yield even more so than, you know, natural sun. We had to draw some boundaries around what, what to focus on and where to start. But to Karen's point, we absolutely recognize that things like the digital infrastructure and power have to be part of a bigger vision for economic development. And we'll be getting to that in our, in our subsequent phases.
Okay, great. I, I really support that. The third point was around affordable childcare. So I know you called it out in the report. Does the county do anything around affordable childcare on the other side of the coast? Are there existing programs that we can potentially tap into? Because I, I know that I've heard from many people that this is an issue for them. And so is that something, is there an existing program that we could potentially tap into?
You know, I think there are multiple programs, but it's just, it's a matter of so many are housed over the hill. And I think it's a matter of like co-locating or satellite sites if we're going to leverage some of those programs. You know, I had the opportunity to tour an economic advancement center. This concept of a business support center, like the 2.5 million dollars is intended to replicate. And that was in South San Francisco. And that is a center that has in one way, supporting entrepreneurs and business owners who may need help with a loan or navigating a difficult time. They also have a job seeker component for people who are either reentering or may need help getting into the trades. And I say that because as much as it's again, like it's such a well conceived idea, but then we come up against childcare again. And so that came up during this tour of this advancement center. And they're actually, that city is in negotiations with the YMCA to bring childcare onsite to help so some of these other interviews and resume polishing can happen. You know, another one of the recommendations is around a business incubator. And, you know, business incubators are not new. We're surrounded by them to the north of us and to the east of us. And Erica and I and the workforce, the working teams had conversations about this. So what kind of entrepreneurs would we want to attract? In one way, we can utilize our natural resources in our location. So, you know, if you think about, it's amazing that we have an airport. It's amazing what happens at Moss Landing. You know, we have the fishing industry, we have Aglands. It's such an incredible place of biodiversity and there's so much potential. And which entrepreneurs are getting the hardest start in terms of an equity perspective? You know, we hear a lot about mothers. We hear a lot about single parents, you know, people of color entrepreneurs. And so what would an incubator look like that is culturally competent and meeting this community where we're at and, and getting to the next economy in an equitable way? Well, maybe that's something like having a childcare component onsite at the incubator. Maybe it's something like having hours where you can access the incubator in non-conventional times, right? So like just kind of having that family friendly flexibility, I think can be interwoven throughout multiple recommendations. And I realize that's slightly off topic in terms of, you know, drawing down from some existing childcare services in San Mateo County. I will say I was listening particularly closely in the last board of supervisor meeting because of that 2.5 million dollars that was slated to be recommended for the coast side in addition to North Fair Oaks. And there was a substantial carve out of ARPA funds for childcare services. And many nonprofits spoke in the public comment to extend their gratitude. And so I think that more help is coming by way of ARPA funds. I know that's not a long-term sustainable solution, but we'll take it in the meantime. And I think that these recommendations kind of position us well to take advantage of some of these opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Karen Decker, what is the name of the South San Francisco Center?
It's the Economic Advancement Center on Grand Avenue in South San Francisco.
That was started with a grant as well, like a...
You know, I think that started about two years ago and they were able to draw down on some emergency relief funds. The county only invested a couple hundred thousand into that effort, but they were able to take advantage of, I, I think Jackie Spear had a contribution. They had a substantial win with an EDA grant. So they were able to really diversify their funding. That was largely not spearheaded by the county, but it was supported by the county.
All right. Thank you. And Commissioner Reddick.
Chair. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank Karen and Erica and everybody who worked on this task force. I know for sure it was an awful lot of hard work, but it's very exciting to see the vision and the recommendations that come out of this. When I was reading the chapter on team vibrant, it reminded me very much of our experiences about 10 days ago at the wine and jazz festival downtown. And I was with some friends and, and family and found ourselves at one point sitting smack dab in the middle of Main Street at a table on a chair with a, with a glass of wine and, you know, the, the hills to the east were so beautiful and the blue sky over the ocean to the west was incredible. And, and then looking... And and then looking up and down Main Street without any vehicle traffic on it was a was a truly rare pleasure. And we just, we talked for a long time about the the potential in in what you folks call the streetscapes there, all the the potential that exists there with the the environment around it and the charming nature of so much of the architect or architecture. I think it'd be a wonderful thing for us to focus, as you as you have recommended, on unlocking some of that potential and and making that real in the next few years. I am, there's a sideline to that. If if it turns out that the local businesses on Main Street benefited as much as I think they may have from that festival, I think it'd be great to look in, to look at similar festivals where we close that part of Heritage Downtown once in a while for for those kinds of efforts to make people, allow people to appreciate more vividly than ever what a resource the the heritage downtown can be and hopefully benefit the the local businesses that way too. So thank you again, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Riddick, and I'll be happy to share that feedback with the Downtown Association. I meet with them once a month.
It will say. And Commissioner Gossett.
Commissioner Gossett. Thank you. Thank you, Erica and Karen, for a wonderful presentation. And I really enjoyed reading the packet over the weekend. And I just sort of just wanted to say thank you for all that you've done. And I look forward to seeing some of the next steps. I was excited to see some plans about revitalizing our downtown. And I didn't really notice some of the things that were cited in the report. You know, some of the big trees that are hiding some of our beautiful historic structures. That didn't come out to play for me until I read this report. And I, and then I noticed it this weekend when I was walking downtown, exactly what you're saying. So I think, you know, our town is so terming. So I think we just have a lot of great opportunities to improve the streetscape and to improve the pedestrian experience, to make it safer for our pedestrians and our visitors so that the visitors get to enjoy this beautiful coast side. So that's basically all I had to say. I didn't really have any questions because I realized there's a ton of work that needs to be done going forward. And I'm so pleased the county gave the town a 2.5 million dollar grant to get things going from a business perspective. So lucky us and I know there's a lot of good work that can be done here. Thank you.
Well, I would also echo, you know, that this is, I'm really pleased that this is not just a report, that so many things have been done already. The Blue Parklet Program, the initiative you guys have taken to to help businesses, to help downtown in particular is is really heartening. I had one question, you know, Hallmark closed. It's it's doors shut last week. And I wondered if there was any kind of plan to identify at-risk businesses and help them before they get to that point. I know everybody's struggling, but but going out of business is a little different. So I don't know if that's part of this. I didn't see that in this plan.
You know, it it is part of the thinking of what a bigger economic development agenda needs to look like. That is, you know, has the resources and structure needed. And we've had conversation about trying to create some dedicated staffing within the city for economic development purposes. And among the roles of such a position would be frequent and periodic touchpoints with local businesses to see how they're doing. At the height of COVID, the county launched a couple of COVID impact surveys that were aimed at small businesses and the coast side was invited to participate. We had some representation in those surveys, but not enough. And so all of this really underscores the need for communication with our local businesses. Karen attends the Downtown Association, that's great. But we know that there are more businesses beyond the Downtown Association. So having those mechanisms to get those, kind of take the temperature of how folks are doing and also to be able to promote services that will be offered through a business assistant center that they can take advantage of. So we, I would just affirm that, yes, it's a recognized need and we need to be, we need to be doing more.
Well, maybe that can be part of this 2.5 million dollar.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times businesses, everyone knows they're in trouble, but maybe there's some particular metrics or particular things that are sort of, you know, red flags that you could look for in particular with with businesses. I don't know. Are we done with this item? Commissioner Benjamin, your hand is raised.
You're muted.
You are muted.
I beg your pardon. Great round of comments. I just wanted to riff a little bit on what you were just saying and something that Rick had said earlier and hope that I can elicit more insight from Karen and Erica about it. There's a, we all want to create a thriving ecosystem. And yet we also are living in a capitalist society. We have constitutional provisions against gifts of public funds to private entities. You know, we want, and so we, you know, for example, learning how to, you know, a school to help people learn how to design and build solar and battery systems sounds like a trade that might carry a lot of weight. A gift of batteries and solar to a private industry as opposed to, say, a nonprofit or some other source where the decision was being made by the city. There's an edge there that I don't really understand where we cross the line that we shouldn't cross. Do you have insight into where these good works shift and become gifts of public funds that are prohibited? I'm not opposing doing the right thing. I just want to be sure I know where those lines are.
Gosh, I really don't, but I wonder, Winter, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, through the chair. I think this is really a sort of case by case analysis. And there's a whole body of case law about this and what the public benefit is that you get. And I think, you know, we've talked about this before and there's really quite a lot of discretion for cities to determine what that public benefit is. But it really is, you know, down to a case by case sort of analysis.
I see. Okay, well, this is again, not to throw any cold water here. This is very exciting stuff. And I think that there there might be important steps that we can take that would fall very safely on the the side of teaching our community how to fish rather than throwing fish. And I know that's what we're aiming for here in all of the areas that were discussed. So fantastic work. Couldn't be happier with what I've seen so far. Thank you.
A lot of our community knows how to fish. So anyone else? Is any other comments? We're not going to vote on this one. So we are, if we are done, I guess we're just moving on. Is that right? Vice Chair Hernandez.
Yeah, so so I did want to just, since this is a public hearing and a public document, sometimes we make hay with a single comment. I just wouldn't call out the tree comment. Well, I do agree, there may be situations where some of the trees on Main Street may impair the view. As a collective experience, the trees are fantastic and they provide a lot of shade on those rare sunny days, but they also add to the ecosystem. So I'm sure the city staff and others who look at streetscapes are not planning to mow down trees. But I know that several folks in our community will take these comments out of context and potentially create alarming concern. So I don't think there's any intention of that. I do think, hey, there may be situations where we may need to look at some things. But I think the other comments around the streetscape, around the dumpsters and, you know, the the vertical parking, the use of the parking space, there's all kinds of things that can be done creatively with that space. I do know we've had the the Parklets item before us where we've talked about these types of things. So very supportive of this document. Just just wanted to get my two cents in there on the on the trees comment.
And we have two cents from Commissioner Gossett.
Okay, and yes, and I would please like to clarify, I'm not suggesting cutting down the trees on Main Street because I actually really like the trees. Maybe they can be pruned so they're not budding windows next to the buildings. But the, I'm not suggesting that in any sense. I like our treescape and I think we can probably add more trees and we should for the environment. So as we build on other areas of town, there'll be opportunities, I hope, to plant more trees.
I can maybe preach into the choir here.
Okay.
But yes, thank you. So just to clarify, we are just moving on, is that right? So we're going to move on to our our next item on our agenda, which is this capital improvement program. I'd like to open it up for any public comment. Oh, sorry, that is out of order again. It did it again. Look at that. Who's presenting this?
On this here.
Maz. Maz, you can take it away.
Good evening.
I think there's, can you pause for a second? I think Winter had a
It's hard, you can't see everyone. Through the chair, if I could do a brief introduction on this one, since there are some potential conflicts issues.
Oh, right, 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 of course, yes.
Thank you. So this item on your agenda is the annual review of the capital improvement program. And the task before you is to determine whether the projects that are included in here are consistent with the general plan. So it's a little bit different from the normal projects that come before you. And that's kind of the scope of what we're, what you're looking at tonight. Because this is a list of capital improvement projects, there is a potential that, you know, some commissioners may have conflicts of interest with respect to particular projects. Some of the projects are kind of citywide and would not give rise to conflicts, but others that are more specific might, depending on where they're located and the potential effects on Commissioner financial interests. So in a situation like this, we like, and this is sort of, we did something similar with the land use plan last, was that last year or two years ago? COVID has melded all time together in my mind. But so it would be helpful at the beginning of this item, even before Maz jumps into the presentation, for any commissioner who needs to recuse on any particular project to state what the potential, what their conflict of interest is and what the project is so that two things can happen. One is when we get to a point in the presentation discussing that particular item, if it does come up in the presentation, staff can pause and we can allow that commissioner to step away from the dais by either logging out a Zoom or turning off your camera and mic for that portion. And then when when we get to the discussion and deliberation portion, you know, I think typically the planning commissioner, one option is the planning commission could just discuss the package, the program as a whole, in which case all commissioners, even if there's a conflict with respect to a particular project, can engage in a discussion of the project as a whole and can take the up or down vote on whether they're, the CIP is consistent with the general plan. However, if any commissioner wants to sort of pull one of the projects for more specific discussion, then we can again pause at that point if the project is one that a commissioner has a conflict with and allow that commissioner to step away during that discussion. So I just wanted to provide that framework and an opportunity for any commissioners to kind of state a conflict with respect to particular projects so we can be sensitive and pause during the presentation and discussion.
Thank you, Winter King. Thanks very much for doing that. Commissioner Benjamin.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Winter. There are two projects in the CIP that have the word Kehoe in it. One is the Kehoe Watershed Enhancement and Environmental Stewardship Project. The watershed that's described is quite close, in fact, adjacent to my home. And since the details of the project aren't clear, I prefer that there be, out of an abundance of caution, that at this stage I will consider that a potential conflict and want to be off the dais if that's discussed. The other item with Kehoe, when it actually is also adjacent to my home, but I obtained a letter of an advice letter from the Fair Political Practices Commission that I can participate in that item. So count me out for discussions on the Kehoe Watershed Enhancement and Environmental Stewardship Project at this time, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin and Commissioner Riddick. You need to
Thank you, Chair. My my residence is very close to a part of Poplar Street that is included in the Poplar Complete Street Project. So if discussion arises about that project, I'll recuse myself from that.
Is there anyone else? Vice Chair Hernandez.
Likewise, the Poplar Complete Streets Project goes across my front yard. And so I will take the presumption of a conflict of interest and choose to not participate in any detailed discussion on that project.
And just for the record, I do live in Frenchman's Creek neighborhood. And one of the items on this in the CIP is a playground that's in Frenchman's Creek. It is pretty far away from my house. And since we're not talking about money for it, I am not planning to recuse myself from that. But if anyone has any kind of issue with that or some other opinion, I'm obviously happy to bow out if it's, if there is any kind of even shell of conflict of interest, but I just don't see it personally. So, Winter, if you have another opinion, please let me know.
Yeah, and the decision is always up to you commissioners. And I don't know, Chair Gordon, do you remember how far away from your house it is?
More than 500 feet.
Okay, so then there's no presumption of a of a conflict.
Okay, thank you very much. So if that is everyone and every recusal, we can move on Maz. The floor is yours now.
Thank you, Chair Gordon, members of the commission and members of the public. Pleasure to be here tonight. So again, as we've been doing the last few years, we're here tonight for our capital improvement program, general plan conformance finding. So here's our recommendation that we will be requesting at the end of this presentation. I won't read it, but it's 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 here and I'll I'll have it pop up on the screen again at the end of the presentation. So what is a capital improvement program? In a nutshell, a capital improvement plan or program is a community planning and fiscal management tool used to coordinate the location, timing, financing of capital improvements all over a multi-year period. And for us, it's divided into multiple projects and programs. Improvements that are identified, it's either projects, which are typically one-time enhancements or programs or which are ongoing actions when a total budget exceeds approximately 30,000 and makes the list. There wasn't, there was a question that came up from Commissioner Hernandez regarding the funding of a particular category for the trails. It was a good question as we realized that although we do not have separate, we do have separate categories, there are some areas of overlap that aren't identified and difficult to understand without digging a little bit deeper into it. For example, the, we'll take the Highway 1 North project. It's housed under the streets category, but it also includes a multimodal trail on the east side. The project is estimated at a total of 12 million. And of that total estimate, we looked at the And of that total estimate, we looked at the class one facility component and it was about 15% or 1.8 million of that class one trail component. So it's just one example of where we may have some overlaps of where the improvements are being done, but housed under a different category. So with that, I have a list of some of our major accomplishments for this current fiscal year. There also have been smaller improvements completed through programs, but not, I haven't listed every single one here, but we'll just go through some highlights of some of the accomplishments for the last fiscal year. So of course, the Highway One South project was completed this calendar year. We formally accepted the improvements on April 19th. We did have a ribbon cutting ceremony late last fall, but there were some punchless items with cauterization we had to work through. So happy to report that as of April 19th, that project was completed and closed down. The next project that we completed this last year was the Ocean Colony Pump Station Replacement Project. This was a project that required easements and a lot of environmental review. And we finished construction in December of 2021. Total project was about 2.2 million for the rehabilitation of the force main that goes from Ocean Colony Pump Station, carries the effluent from Moon Ridge and the Ocean Colony itself. And a complete replacement of the pump station itself on the left side of this picture here. One of the other accomplishments was our sheriff's substation renovation project. We were able to stabilize the building foundation, the portable building foundation, as well as some minor interior improvements to continue to keep this facility in operation while we look at future long-term planning. This project was, the total project cost was about $250,000 and it was accepted on March 1st, I'm sorry. Another one I wanted to highlight was the Poplar Beach Access Parallel Path. This project was accepted in January of this year. We had a total construction cost of about $160,000. This project widened and widened the pathway to make it a standard 10-foot wide path for the majority of this segment from railroad to the Poplar, to the coastal trail. And also included some traffic calming on the vehicular pathway adjacent to it as well. So now we'll go a little bit into some of the project highlights for some of the projects that are on our 2223 list. I have them listed here and I'll just touch on them a little bit. So the first one is the Stormwater Master Plan Update. This update's an important planning study that will help aid development of future capital projects to address flooding, potential erosion and hopefully more. Our last study was completed back in 2016. And since we have witnessed changing physical conditions and updated policies, such as the adopted green infrastructure plan, as well as the local coastal program, which I failed to mention as an accomplishment, but again, another amazing accomplishment in this last fiscal year. It is time at this point to update our approach to addressing stormwater needs of the community, specifically looking at potential for LiDAR and geomorphology to aid in our assessment of the streams and banks. Another quick project highlight is the Keough Pillar Cetus Outfall Repair. There is a four-foot segment of culvert that has collapsed and causing erosion happening at the tail end of Pillar Cetus. And there's a potential for bank failure if left unaddressed. As you can see, it's also covered in vegetation, including quite a bit of Cape ivy and invasive Cape ivy. And so we'll be working on permitting environmental soon as we actually just awarded contracts. So we'll be starting up soon on this project in the environmental design phase. Another highlight is the 555 Kelly Affordable Housing Project. We're currently seeking qualified candidates to develop the housing on the City on Parcel at 555 Kelly. I believe that RFP is still out for another few days, another week or so. We've conducted a site survey as a first step while we're looking and selecting that right partner. And so for those interested, oh, sorry, it actually closed yesterday.
It closed and we're reviewing what we received. I'm going to give an update at the end of the meeting.
Sorry to steal that, I'll skip on that one. All right, another quick highlight, happy to report the Carter Park project. We just celebrated a groundbreaking ceremony this past Thursday and it was nice to see a lot of familiar faces. This project will provide an upgraded use of an underutilized city facility in the heart of the downtown. We're still looking at fundraising efforts for stage lighting and equipment, as well as playground equipment and the entry signage. However, the construction of the major components will be starting up very soon. We are currently going through some of the logistics planning with the contractor that was selected, Wickman Construction. And we will be moving forward with construction in the next couple of weeks. We will also be sending notices to nearby residents and businesses to alert them. We've been talking to a lot of folks in the area and we'll continue to provide those updates through e-news and other social media outlets. Another highlight will be our, is our corporation yard improvements. This project, this project is an important one for the city and especially Public Works for our operations. This project has come before the planning commission in the past. And so right now we are working on, we have proposals received, bids received on this project. We're looking at our funding and looking at going to council, hopefully soon to award a construction contract. This first phase will be the construction of the access road, the protections for the sensitive species and habitat areas, as well as the laydown area for materials and storage. The next phase would include the vinyl storage structure that is proposed just next to the current offices on the site. Another quick update on, I wanted to just highlight this, another project that's been before the planning commission in the past, the Highway One North Safety and Operational Improvements Project. We have, we have been, we have our design pretty much finalized at this point. There have been some utility relocations that we've been working with PG&E. We need to do some relocations of a gas facility as well as the overhead utilities. So working through that with PG&E. Also, there was a water main replacement project from Coastside County Water District. When we were planning our project, we met with them and as we like to do with some of these larger capital projects, we coordinated our efforts, so they were able to move up their status of their project to do it in advance of ours. So we thank our partners over there and everybody else that we work with. And we also will be coming back to the planning commission with a status report on this project as required by our conditions of approval. So that'll be, we'll be coming back, not sure exactly when, but probably towards the end of this calendar year, we'll be back with some more, with an update when we get closer to the time of going out to bid for this project. We're hoping at this time, with the utility relocations moving forward, we're looking at hopefully construction in the fall of 2023. Another project that we have on our list is the Coastal Trail Overlay. We're looking at doing an overlay from Poplar to Central and a bit of coastal path maintenance. Looking to extend the life of this segment as we're looking at funding for the improvements that have been derived from the Poplar Bluff Master Plan, Planning Process. Pavement restoration will be the main scope again, but there will be some areas where we have some localized erosion that we will realign based on that, based on those existing conditions. Here we've got our list of 2223 CIP programs and projects. This was as part of the packet, just a comprehensive list of all the projects and programs in the 2223 program. I have, so we have here the Stormwater Improvements category, the Economic Development Improvements, we have operational, just, I have it here as a reference if anybody wants to go through and take a closer look. But again, all the categories are listed here and it takes us all the way through to the Trail Improvements Program and Projects. So I'm happy to go back to that at the end of the presentation. We'll just, almost done, we'll wrap it here and then we'll go from there. So just a quick overview of the CIP funding, just so I can better explain, you know, what I was, what I talked about as far as the categories of projects, and again, this is an example. So of our proposed 2223 capital budget, which includes new projects and programs, some of our existing projects that have been encumbered don't reflect in that number. But just for the purposes of understanding where our dollars are going, this is the request for funds for 2223 through various sources. It's not all this general fund, gas tax, grant proceeds, lots of different things kind of mixed in that number. Then just wanted to highlight that the Parks and Trails category budget is 1.2 million. That's a total for the 2223 year as proposed in the current CIP document. And then we look at the proposed 2223 street category of the budget is 1.4. And that's where I wanted to just highlight a little bit that there's a percentage of that. About 35% of the streets, when we looked at our current projects for next year, that actually have the bike path improvements funded under those projects, under that streets category. So just wanted to share that, you know, in this scenario for this next year, we're proposing, the costs that are being proposed are, 35% of the streets are actually going not to the vehicular pathway, but more of the complete street element, the sidewalks, the trails and things of that nature. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions and I have the full list of projects as well as the attachment to if anybody wants to go through any of the project specifics in more detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maz. I do want to open it up for public comment before we jump in here.
Would you like me to unshare for the moment?
So if there is anybody out in the public, we have, again, there's a couple of people. If you would like to comment, now's the time to raise your hand. And Bridget will call on you and you can speak about this. I am seeing, so we can move on. The, just like a quick reminder so everyone, the public understands this, our job as the planning commission is to make sure that this CIP is consistent with the general plan. We're not really talking about funding in particular or projects really in particular. Though I would, at some point, when you guys start, after we ask our questions and things, if you could explain how capital improvements include things like IT upgrades and things like that. But I would like to open it up to commissioners first. And when one have questions, concerns, comments?
Through the chair, just before you get going, we just want to make sure if any commissioner is interested in speaking about a project that another commissioner has identified as having a conflict, to let the group know now so that you can plan your discussion around that.
Okay, Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yeah, so first of all, love the diligence that's gone into the budget. Kudos to the projects that have completed and completed. Thank you for removing the ankle breakers on the Poplar Parallel Trail. Thank you for planning to remove the ankle breakers that are on the current coastal trail. It'll be a much needed improvement. So thank you, thank you, thank you for that. And also Maz, thank you for joining us from the set of Honey, I Trank the Kids. I really want Rick Moranis's autograph when you get a chance. I'm a big fan of his work, so if you can find him in the tree, in the forest of lawn there, I'd really love to get that. You know, I think the land use plan lays out priorities and things that are, you know, some things are more important than others. And I think that this does a very good job of capturing the priorities. And if I did my on-the-fly math, which I try not to do in public anymore, about 31% of our budget is dedicated towards street, total capital improvement budget is dedicated to trails and pedestrian and bike paths. So I think that that math is right. And in fact, it's not a little light, it actually seems to be consistent with what we've called for as a priority, the land use plan. I will pick a nit, which I try not to do on these types of things, but I think with the, and this one's not a conflict. But I know the city is committed to, you know, sustainability and greenhouse gas emission reduction. I know right now is a really challenging time to get vehicles. You know, what I'd love, and again, I don't want to nitpick and go after a specific thing. It's just when I look at, hey, we're buying fleets, you know, trucks that aren't sustainable, you know, I always think, well, gosh, it'd be great if we had a standard that said when we don't get an electric vehicle, you know, there's a minimum standard that we have as a city. I don't think it's appropriate for us to get into that, but that's something I'd love to see in the future. I was dismayed when my friends at the US Postal Service decided to buy a few million vehicles that get eight miles per gallon, so that, you know, I think the city's doing a better job than my friends in Washington DC. But yeah, I'd just love to see some kind of standard there, that's all. And but I love the work that's gone into this, the diligence, and I think that this is consistent with the priorities I see in the land use plan. So I have no further questions or comments.
I was muted. Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes, thank you. So I want to say thank you to the city council because they brought this list of capital items. This is their understanding of how they're approaching funding decisions and expressing priorities. And I'm grateful for what's been, I do not want to talk about any specific project. I think that there are a series of them that are very defensible and I respect the judgment that went into them. One area that I'm, I struggle with a little bit is the distinction between capital improvement program, as I understand it, as an individual or for-profit business, as opposed to what a capital improvement program is for a municipal corporation. My grasp of a capital improvement is something that's tangible, that depreciates or that's expensive. And I, you know, our LCP certainly has ramifications towards tangible things, but the LCP itself isn't tangible. And so it's clear that I didn't have a deeper understanding of how we define capital improvements in this context. It sounds like the real difference is just how much money. And, you know, I may be the only commissioner who doesn't already know this or member of the public, but I wonder, you know, maybe this speaks to Chair Goran's reference to the IT. Although, you know, IT, you know, if you are buying a few Cray supercomputers, that's pretty expensive. But, you know, maybe, you know, and I don't mean to direct this just to Maz, if there's someone else who feels comfortable addressing it. I'd like to understand how we draw a line between things that are considered capital improvements and things that would be expensed, well, whatever the municipal corporation counterpart is to an expensed item that would be out of the annual budget for that particular year.
That is my question as well. Well said. Joe? Is that you?
I think Maz can give us the first go-round and Winter and I can also.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I was, I just was wanting to see if there's any more, any other comments, but I'm happy to respond. So yeah, so as far as like fleet maintenance and IT within the capital improvement program, I think the context that we want to consider is, you know, these costs are something that a lot of folks, a lot of municipalities need, right? So these are critical elements to our overall operation. And in past budgets, I think the city here has done, has done a good job of identifying those within the operating budget. And I think with the, what we were trying to do was put it in a place where it was a little bit more visible so folks can see where it was, because these are not, you know, these are larger expenditures as well. And so it's, I think overall that helps us to quantify where those, where those things are going to. Um, so when we talk about I T and fleet maintenance, that's kind of the concept is to have it as a program where we can um account for it um as a function of depreciation, um as well as um having having a have a plan for our our expenditures and kind of plan out things uh moving forward rather than being more reactive. Um, so that's, that was the intent of that. And I've seen capital programs in different municipalities, I've done this in other municipalities where they didn't have I T and they had it within an I P T operational budget. I think we have some flexibility there and I think given our, given our C I P and our uh plan to to build it out, um, it made sense for us to incorporate here.
Well, so so it's not just the I T, it's also, you know, the emergency response plan. Uh, there's things in there that are, that don't seem like capital improvements. So maybe you could just explain why they're in there, why why this is uh the the place for it. I mean, I, it is really nice to get the overview. Like, that's a really comprehensive look at everything the city spends money on, that's great. But number operational, but it was just, you know, I don't have a huge problem with it, but I do want to understand it.
Yeah, no, I mean, and so I would say from the emergency uh response per uh program, um, that is, that is a, that is a set aside fund for, you know, natural disasters. So the that those costs would be going specifically to capital improvement. So if we had a, you know, when we had, when we had issues with the last rain events and we had some uh expenditures, that's where that came out of. Um, so that that the pot of fun would be supportive for for uh those types of emergencies where you're talking about capital emergencies. And then as far, yeah, I would, what I would say is I, it's, although it's not, y- you could consider all of our equipment as capital, right? So it could be capital infrastructure um or 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 capital um i- in in that it's it's a piece of equipment or or tool. And I I guess I don't, I don't know if I have the best answer for that question, but um I, you know, from my experience, I've seen it in multiple areas. And for us, I think it was more of a, it just made, it made sense for it to be housed in the C I P document.
Through the chair, I still have the floor.
Commissioner Benjamin, feel free, I'll be, I'll be brief. So I want to be clear, I have absolutely no problem with however, I, you know, however the you want to organize these, um, as long as there's, you know, I have some reason to understand how it works. And what I think I heard is if we want to provide it with visibility or if it's a big number, then it seems like uh this, the judgment is that this is a good place to put it. And if it's really that simple, you know, I, thanks for the education, I get it now. If there's more to what I wanted to understand, that that's all, really. Thank you. I yield.
So um, John Doughty, have your hand up, I think. Kind of hard to tell with the with Stonehenge back there.
Sorry, sorry, here, I'll do that.
That's cool.
It it, well, summer solstice is coming and so we, I I went with the Stonehenge. Um, thank you, Chair. I I just wanted to to maybe add um a couple of things and into the mix. This is the first year that we integrated in um the fleet and equipment into the C I P. It's also the first year we integrated in um the I T. And um you rightfully pointed it out and they're asking, I think, very good questions. I would say um from our perspective, it really comes down to an accounting process. Each and every one of those um involve basically capital expenditure and capital assets that are amortized and are depreciated. And as such, um, that is usually the best place to put it um in terms of the expenditures. Yes, it can be put into the operations budget, but they're kind of hidden there. Um, and this was an attempt, as Maz, I think, pointed out, was in a way um to try to clearly um identify where those and the source of that money and how we uh deal with those. But again, it comes around to the idea of those are capital assets that are ultimately um depreciated and as such constitute a capital expenditure thus in the capital improvement program. So that's how we arrived at that point, working with our finance department and our finance manager, who is um a C P A. So everybody sort of agreed that that was um a better path um to go with that. Previously, um, the I T clearly was within the operating budget in particular. And um, and I don't think we were absolutely putting adequate money aside um and accounting for the needs within that. And I think they're excited about the ability to to generate and create um a a funding source that at least can continue to build as basically a reserve fund. And one of the things that I think um our ultimate goal is to start to look at building some capital reserve forms for of of capital reserve funds for various components of that, including, you know, um, the library and other buildings and things of that nature. So we're not just simply pay as you go and dealing with that. So like uh with regard to the emergency response, um, it it's it's an oddity, I'm not going to deny that. No, it is, but it has been extremely useful in um the last several years for us to be able to um move forward with um a quick fix and a repair project and things of that nature. Remember, um, the um, or maybe I'll just point out, the city manager actually has authority up to roughly a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to issue a contract and move forward with a capital project. So the threshold that we've set is bo- is just below what the council's um authority begins. And that's intentional in part, simply because these are things that are needed in an emergency response and activity with that. But most importantly, it it those, that money is used and only used for capital emergencies. So just to be clear, it's not just for, hey, we need to do X. It is for capital emergency issues. If it is involving other related um emergency issues, then that's uh running through the C M O's office. Um, and that would be um something of another issue in terms of our operating budget and covering that. So that's, that's the distinction. We probably weren't as clear um as as we could be on that one. And um this has just been a carryover for many years. And there have been years where we didn't even use the funding, there's years that we've um used it all um to deal with it. It it just varies on what um natural disasters occur.
Well, I am not a C P A. But it just, I just wanted, I just, I'm trying to understand. Vice Chair Hernandez, can you sum that up?
Yeah, no, I I uh spent a lot of time working in corporate finance with my friends and and the finance side of things. And so big fan of the transparency and, you know, bringing this up a level to the public scrutiny. I also, I mean, you know, frankly, hazards is a bit, a whole chapter in the land use plan. And so it's good for us to see that you're planning for hazards and emergencies because we live in California. There are a lot of those things that happen here. So, I mean, it's, it, that's, it's, I think it's important and and I applaud um, you know, the finance manager's um interpretation that things like I T budgets and, you know, emergency planning should fall into this. And we get a chance to just say, hey, maybe you should spend more, um, you know, and or, hey, why aren't you spending more? Gosh, you're spending too much. And those are things that are, you know, it's worth the public knowing that we're looking at those things and we're saying, yeah, it's consistent with the uh the land use plan and the long-term priorities that we've put in place in this lovely, lovely document that I finally got my physical copy of and I keep flashing in front of everybody, so I'm excited about it. All right, that's it.
Okay.
Those are all my comments.
Yeah, I guess my 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 concern in bringing it up, besides just having it be clear, is um, you know, if a big capital improvement program comes up, a capital expenditure like, oh, a community pool, for instance, I, you know, if if we're spending the, we have the whole capital improvement budget being spent on operational things, like I just, just want to make sure that 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 there is room for for other capital expenditures, I guess, and that they weren't not just lumping everything into this. I guess that was my concern. Commissioner Benjamin, you have a better way to put it?
If I can unmute, I do. So I I I'm, I'm totally fine with what's going on here. And I want to emphasize, I understand that our scope of thinking about this is not to behave as junior CPAs. You know, we're here to assess whether these are consistent with the general plan and, you know, whether we think they're the right projects or the wrong projects. That's not our department, that's the city council's department. So uh I I I really appreciate the explanation. I'm hoping that it might serve the public interest to ask, that's the only reason I'm asking. And I I I really appreciate uh the reasons that you have made these transitions. It'll be interesting to see how the public reacts to the increased visibility and the way the the way the knobs are turned. So um, good luck and um I personally, I'm, I'm fine with it. I'm, I don't have any comments on any particular project and I'll withhold making a motion in case someone, someone else does.
Um, Commissioner Reddick.
Thank you. I'm like Commissioner Benjamin, I want to uh uh thank staff for doing a good job of demonstrating how uh a- all of the items in this plan are consistent with the general plan. And I I support us acknowledging that.
Thank you. And Commissioner Benjamin, your hand is still up if you're, um, are you still wanting to speak?
Prepared, I'm, if I can stay unmuted, I'm prepared to move the resolution next in order. In fact, I just did it.
Second. We have a second from Commissioner Reddick. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Benjamin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez? Uh, where'd he go? Oh, he's on mute. There you go.
Hi.
And Chair Gorn?
Yes, please.
Motion approved five zero.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
A list, it is quite a list. Jill, I think it is time for director's report, is that right?
That is right. Thank you, Chair Gorn. To get right to it, your next meeting is June fourteenth. Right now, it's looking like uh we might have a light agenda. And if we don't have everything ready, we'll let you know and you might get a break, which could be helpful because you have a special meeting on June second for uh the ethics training, that's from six to eight P M. Jessica Blair did send uh the invitations to you. If you didn't, uh, if you don't have that handy, please let us know so that we can uh get you in the loop. Um, let's see here, uh Architectural Advisory Committee, who's uh, they've been meeting the uh fourth Thursday of the month. So um we're now doing two packets, it seems like, for your second meeting. And just acknowledge um how much Bridget has been doing for um for us on packet day. Uh, so on Thursday morning, uh the committee will be looking at two major residential remodels. Our our intent isn't to bring a lot of single family to the Architectural Advisory Committee, but we keep having uh project sites that are in um more visually sensitive areas and it it's really helpful to get their input there. Uh, so one of them is at five hundred Roosevelt and the other is at seven seventy-five Railroad Avenue. On June first, we have quite a few Community Development Director items. Two of them are hearing items, uh five hundred Roosevelt again, and then two thirty-two Miramontes. It's a house in an A D U. And then we have three accessory dwelling units that were um, they're all qualified for administrative approvals. We do notice them and they have uh what's what we're using as an administrative coastal development permit. Um, I don't have an update today on council. Um, they're of course going to be uh looking at the, finally improving the budget and the capital improvement program. But I do have a couple of updates about the Coastal Commission. Two, two weeks ago, I mentioned that uh the Coastal Commission was taking up the short-term rental ordinance. And it was on their agenda for um Friday, the, it was the thirteenth, yes, May thirteenth. And uh there was a very favorable staff recommendation. Um, however, uh they received some uh letters that concerned them about some of the provisions in the ordinance. As city staff prepared a lot of responses, they are posted on the Coastal Commission's website for that item. Uh, but the staff wanted more time and so they uh changed their recommendation. They produced um an addendum to their report and they requested an extension, which the Coastal Commission granted. Extensions are um automatically set for a year. Uh, I've been reassured by uh Coastal Commission staff that they will uh try to work through their concerns um much sooner than that. And I've, I'm inquiring every week and will continue to do so to make sure that we can give them the data that they're looking for. A D U ordinance has uh now, as I had mentioned before, been adopted by council. We sent it back to the Coastal Commission for their final confirmation of certification. They will take that up, uh I am told, on June tenth. Uh, we've also submitted the ordinance to the Department of Housing and Community Development. And yes, the R F Q um closed for five-five-five Kelly on, that closed yesterday. Uh, we are reviewing what we have and I'm not ready to uh present anything yet, but just just to know that we've, we've received um interest and we're going to go through it all and look forward to uh meeting with city council at the appropriate time. So I'm really happy to to uh continue forward with that. And uh staff is uh seeing that there had, was no appeal on measure D and we just really appreciate uh all the care that was taken uh at the last meeting. That was a lot of work and uh we're, we're glad to be able to move on. We are anticipating um quite a uh push of um applications for those, those projects that were enabled through that. Uh, we will also soon have updates about staffing. Um, we're, we're in the throes of hopefully getting a couple of folks to come on board. And um I can share that much because it's all very positive. And um, well, anybody who comes in new for community development, we will make sure to bring them by a planning commission meeting so you can, you can meet them. And that's all I have. Thanks.
That's a lot. Do any commissioners have um any announcements or reports? Commissioner Benjamin, you have one. You have to unmute, though.
Why change now? So, yeah, not a question uh or report, I'm sorry, not a report or announcement, but just uh to acknowledge that uh community development has been running with a, you know, heavy shortfall of staff. And I am just stunned at the productivity. Um, and I know that comes from uh blood and, you know, sleep deprivation and commitment. And my hat is off to you all. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Gossett.
Okay, I just wanted to say I was really pleased I received this um water report uh from our home um from the coastside uh water district. And it just gave me a water score for our household. And I really liked the idea that they are sending this out to residents so that we can take action if need be um to, you know, conserve our water, especially since we're in this drought. So I was just. To, you know, conserve our water, especially since we're in this drought. So I was just, my hat was. Going off to the, uh, Coastside Water District for doing that to, um, help. Residents understand what their situation is and if they might have a leak in their home. And if there are actions that they can take to, uh, help conserve our, um, water. That's it.
That's great. And Vice Chair Hernandez wraps up.
So, um, likewise, uh, continue to be increasingly impressed with the professionalism and productivity of. All the city staff and our legal representation. So I'll jump on that and say, thank goodness we got all you get, all, all of you here. Uh, you're doing such a wonderful job for us. Um, the city council recently, um, had a. Public hearing on a gondola or presentation on the gondola project, which if you haven't seen it, I'd encourage you to go. Look in the archives on the city council website, take a look at it. Um, it's. People talk about fixing traffic. It's a really creative solution to approaching traffic. The other thing I'll mention is, uh, the city of San Francisco recently, uh, opened, uh, a dedicated bus lane. In, uh, Van, on Van Ness. It's like one point nine miles long. And, uh, it's, the, the feedback on it is phenomenal. It's, it's in. You know, if you take the bus, you can get across the city a lot faster than if you're in a car. And so when you have options like that, it encourages public transportation. And again, one of the things we need to look at is how do we, if you're going to improve traffic, you get cars off the road. So. Take a look at the video, um, you know, I, I, you know, city staff has it. I can forward it to everyone here if you're interested in it, but it's, um. It's fantastic to see that. And as we imagined, our north to south. Commute, you know, maybe there's creative ways that we've talked about where we can think about something similar for Half Moon Bay. So just. Something to consider, you know, in your spare time, because I know all of you are secret planning nerds like me. So I appreciate the. Things that you guys do in your spare time. So anyway, that's it.
And just have one quick thing. Um, you did receive an email from me regarding the planning commissioners handbook. It's three hundred plus pages, so I thought that was a bit overwhelming to print, um, volumes for you. Uh. So I have heard back from one commissioner that wanted us a piece of it, um, and that we've taken care of. So if there's anyone else that has that over. You know, whenever, just let us, let me know and we'll, we'll take care of it for you. Um, another thing is Chair Hernandez, if you get a chance this week to come by and sign a few things, that would be great. And just some housekeeping, um, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Benjamin? Yep, unmute.
He's, he's gonna, he's gonna adjourn, um, via mute. I don't know. I don't know.
I think we have an emotion, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'm almost there. Uh, I, I attended the city council meeting last week and there was a very interesting. Dialogue about, um. Are the use of electronically powered, uh, you know, motorized vehicles on our trails. That's a conversation that we have been very active in as a commission. Both in the bike ped context and just, uh, you know, Commissioner Evans brought a lot of insight. During his term to helping us understand how the trails are informed by the company we keep on the trails. Especially with respect to velocity. And, um, if you have not, uh. Weighed in on that, or sorry, if you haven't, uh, tuned into that, you may want to listen to that section of the. Last city council meeting. It was not conclusive. Uh, they're still, uh, chewing on ideas there. But it was a very interesting conversation and, um, you may want to weigh in at some point at a future meeting. Or not.
And, uh, before we go, John Doughty, you have your hand up as well.
I was just gonna say, um, I, I, based on the council's direction and getting out into the community and talking about that. I'll say you don't need to have to spend time going and looking at that video if you don't want to watch. Me, um, talk a lot and everything, which I know you guys love to do and everything with that deal, but. I'll save you from that pain and suffering by, uh, assuring you that we'll be back to the planning commission. To talk about the policy issue, um, when we do, um, a little more research. And, and dealing with it, it's a little outside of, of, of your authorities, I think, but I think it's important. As part of your land use and as part of the LCP policies and access policies. So I assure you and promise you that we will come back and talk to you and you can, um, have some commentary. Uh, officially on that, uh, but it's probably going to be, uh, after the, the brunt of the summer, probably. Probably not until September that we're, that we're, we're back with you to talk about that.
Well, uh, through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
If we're, if it's going to come back to us for any decision making, then I should probably say. Be more cautious about commenting, uh, at least in public, so we don't brown act each other. But, um, I don't know if that's, if the thought is that that's something we're going to pass on, or is that just advisory and not? Or, you know, do you envision that there's a planning commission decision there?
Through the chair? I, I don't, I don't know that there is a formal action, um. In it, but certainly you can, um, you can as a commission, um, provide some informal commentary back and. And, uh, and put it forth with that. So, um, I would just say I would be cautious to get too, too far into the weeds, given that I know. We are coming back. It's just the safest approach. Um, if you want to discuss it with. Um, myself or Maz, please, please reach out to us. We can talk, um. Um, about that and, um, and go from there, but, um, I would probably be hesitant to do it because I think you will probably want to. Convey comments and, um, and maybe formalize an official position, um, even if it isn't, um, an official. Advisory role.
Through the chair.
You mean in the fall?
In the fall.
Okay. Vice Chair Hernandez.
If you, there's, um, recently, I guess state parks put up some signage with respect to, uh, class two bikes being prohibited on the trails there. There's some, um, fairly hostile feedback on Nextdoor. I know sometimes city staff look at those things, so I'm not. Taking my position. It's just, uh, there's definitely some strong feedback that's been posted there. It's, yeah. Just worth taking into consideration.
Hostile feedback on Nextdoor, really?
I'm surprised, shocked.
Shock, shock. Okay.
We, we are, if we could, and we are aware of it and, and, um, and we are, um. We are meeting, well, yeah, we, we're, um, the city manager is setting up a meeting with state parks. We're also going to be talking. To San Mateo County and, um, the Harbor District, if anybody's interested, the Harbor District. Is going to be talking about e-bikes, uh, tomorrow night, I believe, at their board meeting. Um, there is a. Rental request coming in, I think, for the harbor, um, with regard to e-bikes. So, um, you know, everybody's into it now.
Oh, wow.
I look forward to the Harvard commissioners chasing after people on e-bikes.
Oh, man.
So we'll be back.
Need to tune into that. Um, Commissioner Benjamin? Ah, yep, unmute.
It's a, it's now a ritual. Um, I, I received an inquiry about the status of. Caltrans proposals for the informational signs, the ones that would say, you know, um, there's some traffic. The, the inquiries came from, uh, outside of, uh, the city. They were more in the, the county areas. And they asked where we were. The last I had seen that, they gave a presentation to the city council, Caltrans did. And the city council offered some constructive criticism, I'll say. And I, I seem to remember it was on our, it was in our forecast at some point. And I just wondered, I, I believe it's on the, uh, mid-coast council's agenda. For some signs proposed outside of the city limits quite soon, or maybe it was their planning commission, now that I think about it. But, uh, how shall I answer the inquiry?
I think John Doughty can respond about the county part, but I would like to respond about the, the city, um, portion of this. Uh, city is in receipt of an application for one, um, variable message sign. Yes, council, uh, did look at this and I don't want to dig into this too deeply because. It's not on the agenda and it will be coming to the commission at some point, quite likely. The most recent action on this item, uh, we took it to the Architectural Advisory Committee. Their last meeting and I did announce that to you, but it might have been not, um, as tangible a thing as it is when, when you're asked about it. The Architectural Advisory Committee had design, um, recommendations. And what staff does with, um, this process is we, we work with an applicant, whether they're Caltrans or anyone else on, um. Trying to incorporate such recommendations and to prepare an application to come. Uh, before, uh, planning commission for a coastal development permit, which is what we're looking at. This process was defined by council when, um, they, they saw this item. And then I'm going to let John, uh. Talk about the rest of it because there's, there's more to this story.
John, let's hear it.
I'll, I'll be brief. Um, we understand that the county, um. Planning commission is, uh, scheduled to consider. Their portion, or at least the first portion of VMS signs on their, um, meeting tomorrow. So, um, I don't think Jill or I have had a chance or Maz. Frankly, this has been Maz's project, so. I jumped in in front of him, but, um, but we'll, we'll certainly look and we'll, um, you know, have a better information about where the county. Sits on this and what the recommendation and what happens, um, with that. To be clear, there were, there were sort of two phases of the VMS signs. There was the initial phase. Which is includes the one in the city was just reflecting and then Maz, three more, three additional, four additional.
It's a little different. So the, uh, the, the traffic operation, um. System project, the TOS project, that's the first one they came through and they generated, um, some communication and conversation with the city council. That's the one that has the one proposed VMS sign within the city limits. There was a second project that, that is a multi asset project on highway one from Wave Crest to Moss Beach. That project is looking at doing, uh, a lot more than just VMS. It was looking at doing pavement rehab. Bike pad improvements, a lot of different elements and pieces to it. And, and originally it was proposed to have VMS as well. After getting some feedback from the community, not just Half Moon Bay, but Mid Coast Community Council and other stakeholders. Caltrans decided to shift the focus on that multi asset project away from VMS and take care of the more important pieces, um, pavement, uh, bike pad connections. Um, and, uh, so the TOS is the one that will have the VMS for the city limits. But again, this is, this is the beginning. This is something that they will, will like to look at implementing along, um, different highway corridors. And, um, it, it will not be the last time, um, that it comes up. So although they've taken it away from the multi asset, um, at this moment, it is.
I want to acknowledge that the item isn't noticed, so we should probably stay.
Sure. Big picture, but we, but there still are VMS signs proposed in the county area, which are going to. The county, um, planning commission and, um, I would tune in there. And certainly I'm sure Jill, the next meeting will provide some update as to what the county did, if that's a desire.
That project has some in Pacifica too, if anybody's interested.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Look what you brought up. So I think we're nearing the end here. If someone wants to make a motion.
Um, Commissioner, I mean, Chair Gorn, you wanted to bring to attention before the end of the night that we did. Remember the public that was raising their hand a few moments ago and still risen, so I don't know if you want to.
I didn't see that.
I, I did, just as you guys were wrapping up the last two topics. Oh, it's Michelle Jaganey.
Okay, um, do we have time to do this? I think we do.
Well, I wonder if it's legal.
I don't know if it's legal. Because we gave a lot of opportunity for public comment. Can we, um?
You may, you may open it up for public comment, but I would just say, um, this last discussion piece is not on the agenda, so let's just. Call this an additional public comment item for something that was not on the agenda.
So I would say, um, Michelle, if you can hear me and you are trying to comment on what we were just talking about. We're not going to be talking about that. So you can comment at the start of the next meeting. If you, I don't even see that we could open public comment for something. Cause everything's.
You may, you may, Chair Gorn, you can take it. Um, I, I'm just noting that it's for an item that is not on tonight's agenda. So this is basically like reopening the public comment. That we had at the beginning and there won't be a response from the commission or from staff. Uh, there's no item on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Never did that before. Um. So I will reopen public comment. This is about any item that is not on our agenda tonight.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Michelle.
Thanks very much for letting me. I just wanted to let you know that I met with, uh, Bob and Jim Pruitt today. By Zoom, talking about the coastal trail and those, uh, those signs are legit. We weren't completely sure. There's actually a technical piece of legal stuff that Jim is looking for, so we're working with the state parks on that. And eventually, as, uh, John said, we want to meet with the state parks and, you know, gain some continuity, but I think for the. The, the main thing, it'll be fifteen miles per hour. They're going to, um. Harbor will, um, recommend that the, uh, new business coastal cruise will be approved. Thank you, Bridget. And, um, the VMS signs. Honestly, the city council shut that down because they have jurisdictional sort of precedent, if you will, a little bit of power. Midcoast Community Council, not so much. So if anybody doesn't want them, show up tomorrow and let them know. That's all. Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, thank you. And Commissioner Reddick? Oh, so we're closing public comment. Yes.
Well, I'm here to make a motion to adjourn if, if, if nobody has anything else.
We have, we have several seconds. Vice Chair Hernandez, seconds.
Okay. Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Mr. Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
A hardy eye.
And Chair Gorn?
Yes, please.
Motion to adjourn is up.
Thanks, you guys.
Good night, everybody.
Take care, everyone. Be well.
Thank you.
Bye bye.